Little clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. That strange look outside is the sun, so in case anybody wasn't sure. I was thinking of canceling the meeting so we could enjoy it, but...[204.16][204.16](laughter) Well, I thought about that, there'd be too many. No, thank you. So, we had the clerk call the roll. First of all, special order of business under public hearing district school choice program. I have to open up a hearing regarding the district school choice program.[228.79][228.79](knock on door) The hearing's open for those who want to speak in favor of a district school choice program. Anyone who wish to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anyone want to speak in opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. We'll take a vote later on in the -- on the agenda regarding this matter. All right, next we have the spotlight on excellence, Mass Insight Education. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Tonight, we're here to honor two of our exemplary Lowell High School educators, and they're here with us this evening, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Desmond to share with you the honors.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, we engaged in a partnership with Mass Insight Education to improve upon our programming and enrollment in advanced placement coursework. And through that program, we have had some of our teachers have the ability to be engaged in professional learning where they were with other teachers from around the state, looking at materials within their programs and so forth, because oftentimes, our advanced placement teachers are the only teacher of that material in our schools. So this was a great opportunity, not only to grow the program, but to also professionally offer professional opportunities for our teachers. This year, Mass Insight Education and Research has recognized two of our Lowell High School English teachers, and they are here today to talk a little bit about their experience. And if I could ask if Mr. Barad and Mr. Francore could come to the podium and share a little bit about the experiences that you have had with Mass Insight, and then also, we would want to -- we want to congratulate you on this honor tonight.
Okay. Knocking that off. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. It has been a nice partnership. I will say, one of the nice things about Mass Insight is it allows kids resources that previous to the partnership, we weren't able to offer them. And I've been very impressed, you know, this is the second year that we're working through the program, and the amount of students who have started to take full advantage of the resources, things like Saturday study sessions and try to get kids to go somewhere on a Saturday, that's a tough sell, but we've got a lot of kids that have been taking advantage of it. And the feedback that we've gotten has been incredibly positive. Coming out of those study sessions, the students will say, geez, I learned a lot of great new stuff. Not that we're not teaching them great new stuff, but it's always nice to have another voice in the room, too, with different strategies that maybe, you know, we're learning as we go to those sessions as well. So it's been a great experience. I will say, it was certainly nice to get the honor, but I definitely will say, the real success story is the students and the work that they've put in throughout the course of our partnership over the last two years. They make my job easy. I just try to facilitate their learning and help them perform the best that they can. And I must say that, you know, throughout the years, I think this is going on 17 or 18 years that I've been teaching AP now, and it's really my pleasure to teach AP to the students over at Lowell High School. So, thank you.[453.81][453.81](applause)
Hi, I'm Paul Francore. I've been teaching AP English Literature for about the same time as Darren has at Lowell High School, too. And it's been a great experience. I have my former boss right up in front of me, my current one behind me, and it has been a great experience at Lowell High School. And watching the program evolve has been quite interesting, too, because it used to be kind of an exclusive program with a very strict intake, which I think has changed for the better now, because it's open to more students, and more students have the chance to take advanced courses and be college-ready. And they -- and while we do get them ready for the exam, the emphasis isn't on always just the scoring of the exam as much as, well, they're pushing themselves further than they might have otherwise. And also, sort of get the reward of finding out that they have the ability to be successful in college rather than being intimidated by it all. One great thing that Mass Insight provided for us, which I'm sure is quite an expensive thing, is a mock exam that we could give the students. So they take this mock exam in January, and then we get all the results back, and then we can analyze. And so that test is not waiting in the distance as a mysterious scary thing that you should be afraid of, and I think our students end up going into the exam, which they just took a week ago, with more confidence and more comfort, and also, I think, a feeling of, I gave it my best, whatever the result. And so again, I echo a lot of what Darren said, and it's a great experience working with the students at Lowell High School. It's rewarding. I'm around retirement age, but I'm not thinking about it because it's such a great experience. And thank you for the recognition, too.[583.82][583.82](applause)
So I just wanted to quickly read the awards, so everybody knows what the honor is. Both Mr. Barad and Mr. Francore were honored with the Partners in Excellence Teaching Award, and they both teach advanced placement English Literature at Lowell High School, and they were among 30 Massachusetts advanced placement teachers who were recognized for their outstanding contribution to student success during the 2017-2018 academic year. So if we could just join me and congratulate them.[621.04][621.04](applause)
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to add my accolades. I'm not surprised, I know these are -- we have strong teachers throughout the district. But I was particularly excited because the AP program is so important. It's important to our kids to add that rigor, and when they score, as you know, when they get a high enough score, they don't have to take that class in college. So it's a cost savings, too. And I just wanted to, again, recognize the achievement of being noted, recognized across the state for teaching excellence, and ask through you, too, Ms. Desmond, if we have any updated numbers in terms of -- because I know part of the inspiration about partnering with Mass Insight, not only the Saturday tutoring, the opportunity for our teachers to get together with their peers around teaching excellence in the AP courses and the extra benefits. One of the really key factors for me was the idea of increasing that enrollment, getting more students involved in the advanced classes, getting more diverse students involved in the advanced classes. And I'm wondering if we have those numbers. If we don't, that's fine, we could get it at another point, if you do have that. Thank you.
I do not have the numbers right here. I thought I might, but I do not have them on my computer, so I will get them. Thank you.
Mr. Hoey?
Yeah, Mayor, if you don't mind, can we get a picture?
Oh, absolutely, but...
Great. Soufer, and congratulations. Maybe we could talk this guy into not retiring.[728.43][728.43](laughter)
We don't know. We don't want them to retire, but, you know, I know the current head of school, but I'll keep the title, former headmaster of Lowell High School. One of the things, one thing that I did well was I hired Darren from Lowell Sun. Now, many thought I hired him from Lowell Sun to prevent him from writing stories on me.[748.51][748.51](laughter) But no, I -- and I've worked with Paul Francore since the first day he came into the high school. We have great teachers in Lowell School System, but I would put these two gentlemen, if they went to seek another job, there isn't a high school in the country that would turn them down, would really accept them. And if you notice one thing, they didn't talk about themselves. They talked about the students, about the strength of the students, the character of the students, and how our students made their work more pleasurable. But it's done that way because they care. And students, I'll tell you one thing about students. Students know when you're honest and straightforward with them. They cut through all. And these are two gentlemen that have always just done a superior job at the high school, and the former headmaster, and now mayor. I want to thank you for what you've done. You've really made a difference. But we would like to take a picture with this school committee, okay? All right. Thank you. Come on, boys.
I think Mary Ennis, but I could take one if you want. (inaudible) Yep, tell me. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). I'll send it. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, tell me. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, tell me. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, tell me. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, tell me. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, tell me. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, tell me. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, tell me. Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way. All right, ready? Push it three, it's one of them gotta be good. All right. One more. (inaudible). You want someone to go? (inaudible). Yep, well, that's our way.[1007.13][1007.13][S14.13][S14] All right, ready?[1008.13]
We're really not bad. Thank you for your attendance. Next, motion by Mr. Nada, school committee to vote to request the city council transfer the E-rate reimbursement of the Lowell Public Schools paid telephone expenses to the Lowell Public School Funds. And here's second by Mr. Hoy, Mr. Nada.
Again, this is, from what I understand, a procedural issue. Under, it used to be we would get it automatically, but under the Municipal Modernization Act, we now have to apply and ask for it, so I just wanted to have us put in for it.
Thank you. Next, if you don't mind, I'll read it from the podium, a request by myself, but it's the request of superintendent schools and school committee review a letter request in the 5th grade graders to design shirts for council members to wear during cleanup day to forward letter to 5th grade principals for review and approval. Now, this is a request by school, City Councilor Karen Cirillo, but I informed her that she had sent the letter out to the principals, that the only way any of the, an action like this can be handled is through this school committee, because the school committee does give approval for any program to go on in any school and along with the superintendent. So this is, it's a late date, it's a late request, but the thing is, it's, the will of the school committee was, we should allow this, to have the superintendent give an interpretation of whether it can be handled or not. This council, school committee person, Nada?
That was gonna be my question, I was gonna ask Mrs., I, I read the letter, I know they're looking for a deadline of the 30th, which, with Monday being the holiday, it does kind of give us a very tight schedule. Is this something that, I, I appreciate the council's thought behind it, but is this something that we could do in this timeframe with?
That's, that's the question that has to be asked, you know?
I, I think that we would have to review this and, quickly, tomorrow, and, and we could not, we certainly couldn't make it a mandatory participation, so it might be something that we could do through our classes and recommend if, if, if people would like to participate. But I, but with the short timeframe, if we know in advance in the future, certainly this could be something that could be built in. And the, the additional, the additional item is that there are no T-shirts that are part of this plan, so one of the things that I, I think I would propose is that the students could probably draft something on paper as, you know, but, so, so those are some of the considerations, but we certainly could put something out as an offer for people to participate.
Well, before I can go on, I really need a second for my own motion. Second, Madam Nada, appreciate it.
I, you know, Mr. Mayor, I, again, I appreciate what the counselor was trying to do, but I, I think we should just, at this point, just tell her, unfortunately, it was, it was a little late in the, in the time to ask, and next year, if she could give us some advanced warning, we'd be happy to assist.
Thank you. That will, I mean, I think Council Nada has raised, you know, a pertinent point, this is a late time of the year, so.
Want it again?
Madam Starry?
I, I'd just like to say, if we can open it up to, as a voluntary, if you want to participate, I would love to give a counselor what they're asking for, for our schools, 'cause you know, I'll be with my hat in hand and my, and my handout for money. So, you know, it is short notice, but if we don't make it mandatory, I mean, our students have art, you know, so it could be a project, and we know, we have a very competitive spirit across the city. We love to compete in knowledge bowls and track and, you know, among the schools, and I think that it's a positive thing around the cleanup and the environment, to not put a requirement on it, but to just try to follow through with the council's intent to open it up to the middle schools if they're interested. I, I would be in favor of that, without any expectation or requirement, just, this is a fun thing if you want to do it. And then, of course, we could have the kids come in and, you know, celebrate their designs, 'cause art is the handmaiden, right? Whatever, what's the phrase? Of human good? I forgot the other part.
I think this request comes with a bill to it, so, I'm more afraid of that than, do you want, shall we just leave it up to the superintendent, just, Mr. Dakota?
Right, I'd like to add to that, because I, and I know that there, there are some art teachers who are scrambling to try to find a little, a little project at the end of the school year, so this could be a perfect solution for those teachers who are looking for those unusual quirky things, that, something different, I don't want to do the same old, same old, same old, at the end of the year kind of thing, 'cause they do, looking, they are always looking for those projects, so I, I think it's a great idea.
No, I appreciate this, I mean, but, the thing is, she now knows it has, it's within the purview of the school committee, it's not something that can be done independently, and you give the approval to superintendent, but let her, yes, Madam Superintendent?
I will forward this out to our, our teachers tomorrow with a notation relative to that it's, it's optional, but it's an opportunity for our students to be part of, you know, some, some exciting planning.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent provide the committee with a report on the policies and programs to support our refugee students along with any recommendations for improvement. The report should include data on the number of languages other than English students at each level, programs in the district, the enrollment trends over the last five years, as well as upcoming enrollment projections.
Second.
A second by Mr. Hoy, Ms. Doherty?
I think you're on, I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. You know, it was part of, when we were looking at the budget and one of the positions that was slated to be eliminated, the refugee, uh, not a guidance council, social worker. And that prompted me to think about, what are the numbers we've been seeing of refugee students in the district over the last few years? What, what are the supports and programs currently in place? And I thought it would be a good time to get that information for the committee. I, I don't know if I've got the phrasing right, but I know that we are tracking those numbers, we keep track of that, and I believe it was, that phrase, language other than English, or for students who are not the typical non-native English speakers, not the Kamai speakers, Spanish speakers, but those, would that be, is that the proper way that you are tracking those students?
Yes, we, we actually have students tracked for their refugee status as well, and we were gonna provide that to committee for, for you tomorrow night during the budget session, so you'll have that particular piece of it, but if you want additional detail, we certainly can provide that at a later date.
Well, I, I mean, detail in terms of what services are we currently providing those students and programs that are in place, I think would be part of what we'd need to know, not just the number of students. And do you have any idea in terms of the upcoming enrollment projections? You do? Okay, so, I mean, I look forward to getting that information, I think it would be useful. Thank you.
I, I would just ask, the difficulty in getting this, is this something that can be obtained reasonably?
So, we keep track of those numbers, we have them based on where the student, the student is coming from, so we will provide you a list of each, each country that the students are coming from and the numbers, and we have that for the last five years in a report for tomorrow. We do get estimates from some of our, some of the organizations that we collaborate with, like the International Institute, to give us some projections, but of course, there are policies that we do not have control over that do change those numbers somewhat. So we, we, we have some estimations as to what we may expect for next year, but we definitely have the solid numbers from the past five years for tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next, we have reports of the superintendent. The first one, 7.1, is school ground maintenance. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. This is, report is in response to school committee member, Mr. Hoy's, request for some consideration to think a little differently around how we maintain school grounds, and especially a consideration of a serious issue that has been a problem in some of our schools relative to hypodermic needles and things that are a real safety concern for our children. So, our facilities director is here, Mr. Underwood, if you have questions for him, but he can share with you a brief outline of our proposal for the summer months.
Good evening, everyone. Any questions on, on the report that we have?
Could you just, could you just, I'll give a quick overview for people who are listening in as to what the maintenance program would look like?
Okay. So, as my report says, who would thought that picking up leaves would become a hazardous job in the city, but that's exactly what's, has become in several of our school locations around the parks and areas, you know, so the days of having day custodians grab a group of kids and go out and, and, you know, do a cleanup to the yard, which was always helpful and always a joy for the kids, is, is gone in many of our schools. So we're starting to look outside the box and see what we can do to, you know, continue to address this, 'cause we know it's, it's a job that has to be done continuously. So what we've thought about is, several years ago, when the numbers were a little bit higher, we had the, the security guards at work during the school year, as security guards, who have the option of becoming custodians during the summer breaks and school breaks. So at one time, we'd had them solely be landscapers, and we'd bought some equipment in the city, and we had them go out and go to each school throughout the summer and breaks, and that was, it was a great help, one for the senior custodians and custodians in the schools while they were getting their schools ready for the summer and ready for the school year. And it also allowed us to get to the things that weren't, you know, normally done when you're just trying to get out there on a, in a quick thing, just trying to keep the appearance up to the schools. So, some of the other things we've done is, we've worked with ROTC, who are, I know, on June 1st, we'll be doing a couple of the cleanups of the schools, they're always helpful to us. We've reached out to the Parks Department, who will be meeting again on Tuesday, with Shannon Cohen, who's the new Parks Director, and we'll be looking, talking with them and talking about ways how we can work together and collaboratively work on these schools and do some of the things that, you know, they have the manpower and the, I'm sorry, they have the equipment, and we have the manpower, and together with that and security guards and the investment we'll be making next year on some new lawn equipment, we'll think it'll go, go a long way with the curb appeal and the safety of the schools throughout the district. So, that's what we're hoping to do, that's the plan, be happy to answer any questions or concerns we have.
Mr. Dakota, you had your hand? You're, I'm sorry, you're outside. Mr. Hoy?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank you for the report, Rick, and I know you're gonna do a good job for us, it's just that we're responsible for cutting the grass around our schools and getting rid of the leaves, and the city's constantly fighting cleanup stuff over there, you know, and plastic bags and everything else. But hypodermic needles, I know they're an issue, I live in, I live near a park, and I do find them all the time. I usually take a picture of them, and I get rid of them, 'cause I have to deal with some shops because of diabetics, anyways, diabetes. But I really want the curb appeal to come, come out better than ever, and I know, I know you're probably hurting for help, but that's all I wanted out of this, to make sure we look better than we ever did. So thanks again, Ms. Underwood, I appreciate it.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, and I also want to add my comments, and I, I think the curb appeal is important in terms of just the respect and knowing school is an important place, and we care about our schools. My question really has to do with the, the city resources, because my understanding is also that many of our schools rely on nearby city parks, that's their only playground facility, and I know that's not our responsibility, and I'm just wondering, is the city able to keep up on maintaining those parks that are near our schools? And, and would this be a collaboration that's, just are using their equipment when they don't need it, or do you see it expanding to some of those parks?
That's exactly one of the topics we'll be speaking with Shannon and Ralph Snow on Tuesday, is exactly whose responsibility different parts of the areas are. For instance, we have the Starkalosa School, where it's a ball field right next to it, there was concern of some trash that was blowing around that parks, and there was a question of who takes care of it. So we'll work on that, we'll decide, we'll come up with some ideas, and, and some, my thoughts and their thoughts on whose responsibility is, and we'll come to a determination and settle it. But we have several of areas like that, the North Carmen is part of the housing, it's also part of the parks, so we've had, you know, a couple of phone calls over the, the housing to see if maybe we can work collectively in, in that area, 'cause that's, that's a big concern over at the Merklin School, not only you have the baseball park that's part of the parks, but you have the housing that lives right next door. So I think it's just, you know, getting all the parties together, thinking outside the box, thinking what we can do to work a little bit better, because a lot of the trash is, you know, housing, it's parks, it's schools, so rather than working, you know, to go in there and try to start pointing fingers and laying responsibilities, what we really want to do is, we want to just see how we can work together, and get, work as a team and just get it done. So, and I think everybody's on the same train with the ideas of that, you know, this is something that has to get done, we have to look at it, not just for curb appeal, which is important to us, but for the safety of the kids and the students and, and everybody in the district that's using those parks and those schools, you know, all day, so.
You're all set? Mr. Hoy?
Thank you, Mayor. I did leave one thing out, since you've taken over this department, Ms. Underwood, I visit the schools at least, I try, once a year. I just got done visiting 28 schools, actually 29, but one's a place for the special ed kids that is in Chemsford, but overall, I really think our schools look better than they ever did. But you did lose recently two employees, one's Mr. Bilby, I forget his first name, forty-year career, kept the Maury School like a jewel, another one was Manny Silver out of the Mc Avenue School, that, amazing, you had to tie a rope on the guy so he wouldn't paint your foundations. Well, it's the truth, the Le Blank School has Manny's brother working in it, but when you lose two major employees like you lost, it'd be like Bill losing the two teachers that were here recently. Those type of guys are hard to replace, but we need some of the staff to understand we've lost a couple of good ones, and we need someone to step up and act like a Mr. Bilby, and act like Manny Silver. And not to say some of yous aren't doing it, there's a lot of schools I can say, hey, nice job, thank you for what you're doing, that's what we did on that tour. But again, you can't be losing help like you lost and expect to get a lot of things done, so Rick, I think you've done a great job, Ms. Underwood, I should say, and just keep up the good work for us. Thank you.
Mr. Doh, Mr. Dakota, I'd get, I know I'd get there.
Remember you high. Should something about this be perhaps included in the, in the maintenance effort, of effort discussions that have been going on? Should this be included in that? Something to this effect, so that we don't run into this situation down the road? Just putting that out there?
We can, we can look into doing that, I'll give you an update on that when we get to the motion part.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Underwood.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
All right, next, we have the response to Mr. Hoy's motion of May 1st, 2018 regarding measles transmission prevention plan. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. As you all are aware, our, our nurses are part of the city's health department, and so I am grateful to the, the health department for preparing this report for us, and it just outlines that the school health unit ensures student immunizations, it provides you with the school health unit immunization plan and guide, as well as some of the regulations around our McKinney Bento homeless students and their rights. So currently, in the district, there are nine students with medical exemptions and 48 students with religious exemptions to measles, mumps, and rubella, so, and all other students are 100% compliant with the immunizations. So, the, the school, the health department has very specific regulations that they follow according to state guidelines, in the event of a confirmed case of measles, immunized, unimmunized students would be excluded from schools for a period of 20 days, 21 days after exposure. And we are immediately notified, either if we hear first, we notify the health department immediately, or vice versa, and then we work very closely with the health department and access their guidance on how to convey the information to families and get, and get information out. And the health department couldn't be here this evening, but they certainly, they said that if you have specific questions for them, that we, we would certainly convey them to them and get you the answers back.
Mr. Hoy?
I just want to thank the superintendent for the report. It's not so much about the measles, it's in the news everywhere, what I'm concerned about when you, you do all these interviews of hiring a new superintendent, and you hear their talk about data and medical and nurses, and then when I hear like Worcester, the number of nurses that they have, I just wish for Lowell to have one in every school, I know we don't. I think we're losing nurses because we might not pay enough, Mayor, and it's a big issue. I know we don't have all the money in the world, but it's just something I think you should keep an eye on, just in case we do get a case of measles, I just don't know if we have the medical help in our school system, that's all. Thank you.
It was a good motion, no, thank you. Any other discussion, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I, you know, I appreciate getting this, this report, and I, I certainly think it's very instructive, so we're basically looking at roughly between like 50 and 60 individual students within our entire population who are not, have not been immunized. I know that, I believe the prevailing number is, is it 90%, you need to reach, is it 90 or 95% to receive, kind of hit that level of, of overall community immunity? I don't know if the health department shared that information.
They did not share that information, but I can get that, yes.
Obviously, well, well below that.
Right, exactly.
Or above that, I guess, depending on how you glass, half empty or full.
Are we over 95% or something like that?
Yes, we, we have, actually, the, the health department was commended for their immunization rate this year is very, very high.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly would seem so with this kind of a, with this kind of a, a number, but I know that there is a specific number that you need to reach to hit that, honestly, if only for my own curiosity, if we could just, you know, if you could just let me know that.
I will get that number too.
I mean, again, with a number that low, we're clearly within that, that, you know, threshold, but I know that that is a number that you track against to ensure that you're at a, a high enough level to ensure, you know, the kind of herd protection.
But these programs were already in play, but I think what's important with Mr. Hoy's motion is that it puts it on, you know, in the front page for us, so to speak, and that we're watchful of it. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Next, we have report on motions, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, this is your bimonthly report of motions for your consideration, and if you have any questions relative to our assessment of their completion, please don't hesitate to ask.
Ms. Nada?
Mr. Dakota mentioned the maintenance of effort, I just wanted to, we did some initial work on that, there was a, a meeting that Mrs. Durkin and CFO Turner and myself attended. It wasn't very fruitful at the time, so we're gonna go back to the drawing board. In the meantime, I was, I did a little investigating with Brockton, Worcester, Springfield, Havrell, Fall River. I have to tell you, I was very surprised that Lowell has one of the only communities, one of the few communities that actually has a written agreement. I was shocked, Havrell said to me, the gentleman I talked to in Havrell said, if you guys have something, we'd like to see it, which, which I forwarded. Worcester actually puts theirs in the back of their budget book, it's online, it doesn't talk about exact revenue, and the other question I had was how much of their required net school spending did they receive in cash as opposed to these things? And you'll be disappointed also to learn that we're all about at the same level. We really are, it is, and when I talked to Desi directly, the gentleman I talked to down there said to me that the way it is written, there is no requirement, no set percentage that a city has to contribute. If you can work out an agreement, you'll, you're very lucky, but there is nothing, so even though, you know, it may not be exactly what we want, we do have one of the better agreements from, I mean, Worcester says right in theirs, it includes the cost of transportation, which I know we've been, you know, we've, we've brought up before, Worcester has that right in there, so it, it's not, it's not a dead thing, but with the budget season and the end of the year coming up, I think it's just something that needs to be put aside for a little while until we get, get through these things and we can pick it up again in the fall.
And also with the Promise Act to, you know, the funding with, you know, reforming funding to the school systems. Ms. Doherty?
Okay. Actually, I, I was gonna just say, I'm really looking forward to working more collaboratively, as we had Mr. Underwood talk about just a few minutes ago, we are in the same city, and the resources are tight, I get that, and sometimes it's just fair is fair, you know, that, that grant, those matching funds at $550,000, I can't let go of that, Mayor, 'cause that was fair, that that money go to the schools, but actually, if I could, in terms of the report on motions, I had something else I wanted to bring up on the report on motions, which is what we're talking about. If I could do that now, or did you want to speak on the maintenance of effort?
Yeah, I'd like to just say a, a few words. Where I was on the school committee back in 95, when we had a wheelbarrows full of money, you know, Ed reform was early, and we did have a lot of money, we could put your movie studios in, department head, you name it, anything people asked for, we could give it. My concern is a little bit, what I hear Ms. Doherty always talking about is what our own city council, city councils, there's seven of them that used to be on the school committee, and I think they should know, more than I should know, that the schools have become very inclusive, more than I've ever seen, I couldn't dream, when I came back 16 years from when I was on here, before, we do so many things, so many great things for children, we look at a dollar bill, like I've said 100 times, about 85 to 86 cents out of every dollar goes to payroll, we get 14 cents to do everything else. Can you picture if anybody could spare us a dime, Mayor, what would get done? Look what we get done in the system with 14 or 15 cents on the children, so. I think the Promise Act is the issue, number one, so keep pushing it hard, Mayor, appreciate it, but it's not gonna be easy to get by our state reps, sorry to say that.
But the thing is, I think the Senate has a handle on it, so, thank you. Ms. Doherty, go ahead.
Thank you, yes, back on the report on motions, I would like to add to our motions that we have the, we're gonna, we have meetings with the Lowell High School Student Advisory, we've been meeting three times a year, we're gonna be putting that on for four times a year, and I'd like to add that to our regular report on motions so that we can keep track of those meetings, and also, because it wasn't, it's not on the official calendar, we are adding, we'd like to add a meeting for the June 19th meeting, to have the, the new student advisors for the next school year will be elected at that point, and they, the students express interest in being able to come to our, so it would be prior to the June 19th meeting, we would meet with the Lowell High School Student Advisory at 5:45 PM on June 19th, and I think we would need a vote of the school committee to add that to the report on motion, so I'd make that as a motion.
Motion, second by Mr. Dakota?
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay. You all set?
Yes, thank you.
I just, just to add on to, to Ms. Doherty's initiative, looking at the, you know, the, our meeting schedule with the, with the high school, school government, I think is great, what I, I thought might be of interest is, as we go into a new school year, I think it would really be great if we allowed these students the opportunity to have their, our meetings with them, actually as part of the LTC coverage, that those students would be able to kind of sit in these seats, we'd be able to kind of, you know, find other places to sit and let them conduct the meeting. I think the opportunity for them to have their meeting televised and, and be able to really conduct it as part, you know, with Robert's rules, with, you know, perhaps the mayor presiding.
I think if we're replaced, we might not be allowed back, that's.
They may do, yeah, they may have far better and more innovative ideas than we've been able to pull together, but I think it might be a way to kind of give that, that interaction between the school committee and the, the student government, a little more heft, a little more substance, so that they're able to, I know they, I mean, I always have a difficult time making it for that meeting, I know, but I think it could be of real value, certainly to us, in being able to hear them in a more substantive way, but I think for the students too, to have that opportunity, to have that meeting, you know, on television, they're able to see it, their friends are able to see it, and that interaction could be part of our ongoing kind of conversation with student government. of our ongoing kind of conversation with student government.
Actually, there's enough room to have one sit by each School Committee person and, you know.
Absolutely. However, I mean, however we structure it.
It helps in a mentoring plan, too. Okay, good point. Madam Superintendent, first. Go ahead, Madam.
So, I just would say that what I will do for the June nineteenth meeting is I will bring forward the School Committee calendar with those revised dates that include the students participating.
Okay. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think it goes along again, I agree with Ms. Martin about televising it because, again, it would show the city how great our kids are, and we all know they are. And I think we start showing more positive articles and positive things that happen. I think it's.
No, they're impressive. There's no question. You know that, yeah.
Always great. Thank you for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Enrollment figures, Madam Superintendent?
This is just your regular enrollment figures, if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the Report of the Superintendent seven-one through seven-four as a report of progress. Motion by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Hoy. Thank you. On the new business, vote of the inter-district school choice. I need a motion that Lowell Public Schools reconsider participate in the inter-district school choice program for grades nine through twelve for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Before we go into this, Madam Superintendent, can you give us an overview?
Certainly. On May, I want to give you the correct date. On May third, we received notification from the Department of Education that there was some revisions in the guidance around school choice being proactive, and we wanted to have the school choice vote early so that we didn't forget it, and we did have that early, but the guidance came after that. So, after reviewing the new, the new guidance, it's our, and then also discussing this with our Lowell Public School attorneys, it's, it's our recommendation that perhaps, given the current budget, that, that we not consider school choice for this year. We do have the ability to amend our vote as long as we do it before the June deadline. So, and Attorney Ortiz is here and can share some thoughts with you as well, or answer any questions if you have that.
I think that's the direction that we should take based on some of the changes in the state, especially regarding funding and other issues that can be difficult. Mr. Ortiz?
How you doing, everyone? Again, my name is Mike Ortiz. I'm the, one of the staff attorneys for Lowell Public Schools. The superintendent's correct. After we received the updated guidance, we discussed it among ourselves, that being myself, Jane Moshe Canty, Attorney Jim Hall, along with the superintendent. I also reached out to the high school to talk about some of the issues. And our thoughts is considering the fact that the amount of money that we're getting for school choice, that it might not be worth, or the benefits to Lowell aren't necessarily in comparison to the costs. And I think when we look at some of the revisions and the updates, I think it's going to impact us a little bit more than we had thought, especially in terms of cost. And I think in our discussions, it was better to recommend that we step back a little bit, especially in light of the fact that we don't get as many kids as we had envisioned through school choice and exposing the district to potential cost and getting the benefits that we get in light of the fact that there are so few kids being involved. We didn't really feel that the benefits outweighed the potential cost. So, we're just asking and suggesting that maybe we take a timeout, step back, look at it a little bit more, and then we could decide going forward. Once things get a little bit more stabilized in terms of how do we support Lowell High School a little bit more.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Attorney Ortiz. I also did want to inform the committee that any students who are currently under school choice, who have been accepted over the last two years, will, will maintain their status at school choice. This does not negate their ability to attend school. This would be just for the upcoming school year, and then the committee could make a determination again at this time next year whether or not the district is in a better place.
I know that after looking at some of the rules and changes, if I was still back there, I'd be recommending to you that you reconsider this option. Ms. Martin?
So, can I ask what the change is? What is the change in funding or, or policy that, I know you're all in agreement, which is great. I just, what is the actual change in terms of the, what we'd be kind of being able to draw down per student?
Yeah, I think some of it was some of the updates around some of, some of the discipline issues. They provide a little bit more clarity around those, and I think in light of the shortages and needs of Lowell High School, I don't know if, our sense was that potentially having students who may have been expelled from other schools, who could petition through school choice, might tax some of our resources at Lowell High School. I think some of the concerns, especially when you look at the Q and A, which I believe in your packet, is pages, would be pages, just let me find it.
Yeah, I can't read it.
It's questions fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, which in your packet would be pages eight and nine. There were some concerns about that. I think also when we think about the fact that, as the superintendent indicated, when students are accepted in school choice, they get to remain until they receive the high school diploma. We do have a therapeutic day school in the Lowell Public Schools, the Le Blank Day School. So, again, when we take students through school choice, we cannot discriminate. We have to take all students. So, if we take a student who may need a therapeutic day slot, and we have to potentially move them to the Le Blank School, we only have so many slots and spots in that school. So, if we're not looking at potentially adding slots in our therapeutic day schools, then if we take students through school choice who eventually may need that setting, are we, are we, in essence, not freeing up or not having a slot available for a Lowell Public School student who may need that later on? So, I think there was been some clarity around some of the guidance that just raised concerns. And I think in light of the budget, in light of some of the concerns, our thought was maybe we should just take a pause, look at it, and then come back at another time when the district's a little bit more financially able.
At some, at some point, doesn't this eliminate the head of schools' choices, in other words, to run her school? In other words, to...
No, because in essence, it doesn't, but it does, it does create the situation where students can petition and apply to come into Lowell Public Schools, and we have to take them as they come and support them as they come.
The way I read, interpret some of the things, it, where she could have said no, simply said no.
Correct.
That's taken away now.
That's correct.
Those are other issues.
Right, because of a student.
This would be, I have to say, some considerable thought. When you take that out, away from, that's what the whole design of the Ed Reform Bill, I mean, you know, meant to give principals the right to be able to run their school and have some control.
Right, because if a student was expelled from another district, there would be some limits on schools that they could have potentially petitioned to. As you can look at, when you look at the Q and A, you can see the answer is no. We cannot prevent those students from coming, and maybe we shouldn't. But I think in terms of the limited resources that we do have, I think we need to be kind of thoughtful with that and make sure that Lowell High School's equipped to deal with those situations before we invite.
But it's also over the overall funding process itself, too.
Right. But keeping in mind, it's only five thousand dollars, I believe, that we received for this. And I, there is a differential for special education students, but in terms of the dollars that we're getting, any school that takes school choice students, you got to ask yourself, is that amount that we're receiving, in essence, does that cover the potential cost? Because one student who gets, for example, an evaluation for special education services, that's an in-district cost to us of about six to, six to seven thousand dollars. So, the five thousand we get may not necessarily cover those costs. So, again, those are factors that we discussed and we weighed in speaking to the high school, and we just felt, again, the cost didn't outweigh the benefits that we receive from the state necessarily.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. And I can understand taking this year off to, absolutely. But I mean, how could, the students who are expelled, I can understand that being an issue. But for special education students, they're sending districts are responsible. I mean, there's, it wouldn't make sense for a student from another community who has a special education requirement that's been determined to then come to Lowell to have that requirement met without the sending district having to also send the...
Yep. And I think that's a great point. But if you look at page eight, the Q and A number twenty-six, so here's, here's where I can play mischief. And again, I don't mean to project anything on any school district. This is a hypothetical. But if I'm School District B, right, and I have a student that I know needs a, potentially know, I know needs a therapeutic day school, I don't want to send that student to Crest or Valley because I know that's going to cost me seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year. If I talk to that student and say, "Why don't you do school choice? Lowell or District B has school choice. Give it a try, see what happens." Once that student gets accepted into school choice in Lowell, the student, in theory, is entitled to the full spectrum of services that we potentially have. So, and that means there's a student that another district may have put out of district because they didn't have a therapeutic day school, who is now in school choice in Lowell, potentially can go to Le Blank Day School. And the issue with that is, if there's forty-two slots and potentially you have five students through school choice who takes that, those slots, then what position does that put our sped director or our district if we need five Lowell students who need those slots as well? Do we need to now add capacity to our schools that may not have them? Or do we now, at least in the high school level, because nine to twelve, that would cover the Le Blank, or do we now have to move those five students who might need those spots, who would have had them, out of district to Crest or Valley or somewhere else? And how does that impact us? And again, because we have, because we have the luxury, right, of having an in-district day school, students who are, who are in out-of-district placements can petition for school choice. And in theory, Desi has said, "A day school's a day school, a day school." So, the equivalent is, a Crest placement could turn into a Le Blank placement, which means, to the benefit of another district, they could end up saving an out-of-district cost and putting that on us, and we only get five thousand dollars in play. And again, I'm not saying any district would do that.
Because it's profoundly illegal. I mean, it would be a civil rights infraction. It would...
But not if the parent chooses to do that, because when you look at question twenty-six, parents have the right to participate in school choice regardless of whether the students are in out-of-district placements, regardless of whether the student's expelled, regardless of their disability, the academic potential, it doesn't matter. Anyone who's nine to twelve grade can participate, and we don't have the choice to discriminate, nor should we. Because there are some students who potentially have been expelled, who potentially can be very successful. But we're saying, because we have to take all comers, are we equipped at this point, in light of our budget situations, in light of the demands that we currently have with our students, in light of the lack of capacity in some of our programs, do we want to take on this? And again, it's ultimately your discretion, and we ultimately defer to what you think is best. But in looking at all the potentials, we just felt that at this particular time, it was better if we just stepped back and just look at the data, look and see is school choice really working for us or for the students, because we don't get many of them. And I think Mr. Mayor's comments are also something. We want to make sure our head of schools has, has some discretion over this, which school choice doesn't necessarily give.
Ms. Martin, I don't want to, I never looked at abrogating the rights of special needs students, okay? But the thing is, they're fundamentally making changes that take away some of the decision-making processes of the school system. And once you're into that, I mean, I think we need to withdraw from something like this to protect the school system, the integrity of the school system itself, and then deal with it, you know, down the road. But the thing is, you know, Attorney Ortiz's point, you know, made some, you know, very valid points, okay? But it's not to take away rights, but the thing is, it's also to allow the school system to be able to function.
And I'm certainly, I'm willing to take a year for us to kind of make this, you know, kind of investigate these new changes and ensure that we're in compliance. But I mean, overall, I mean, it's the same dynamic. I mean, if our special education department was telling a student, "If you take school choice in Chumpsford, then your special ed requirements will be better met." Now, we know that that's not the case because school has, Lowell has better, you know, just has, has more offerings just based on our size and, and the quality of our programming. But I mean, that, I mean, that's, that's morally wrong. I mean, that's just not the way.
But it's done.
That we should be conducting things. And that's fine.
Many times, it's done.
And I don't want to... If we're trying to build, I'm sorry, if we're trying to build our day school programming, say, for example, so that it can function like a Crest, so that districts can send there, which is what we want to be able to do, that they'd be able to take us, you know, that they'd be able to send their students, pay the Crest rate or whatever the collaborative rate is, it becomes a cost center for the, for the district that we're able to, you know, make money, being able to provide this high level of services at a closer location. I mean, that's the ultimate goal for all this programming. I don't see how it could, again, we can investigate it, but circumventing that through a school choice just seems, you know, unethical.
Madam Superintendent?
I would say that whether, whether you decide on school choice or not this evening, we just felt it was our obligation that since there was some guidance that changed, that we brought it forward to you for your consideration. But to Ms. Martin's point around tuitioning in students, this, this decision wouldn't preclude us from being able to do that and setting our rates that are comparable with other districts and inviting students in.
Right. It would have no impact on that.
You all said?
Yeah, I'll have one second.
Yeah. Mr. Hoy?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm stuck in the middle because I know someone from Tingsmore that got saved by the school choice last, last year, actually. And hopefully, he didn't cost us any extra money. He'd probably come in with just five thousand. I think that's the issue, that you get one in and you're only going to get paid five thousand dollars for him. And if he goes into these special programs, now we could be spending upwards of six to ten thousand dollars or more on a person. And I think that's what I read in there, that we're not going to be getting the money we should, and it will affect our own children because we won't be able to give them what they need. Is that basically...
Yeah. And again, our recommendations aren't based on any specific student at all.
Okay.
This is more of a discussion that we had among ourselves based on the updated guidance. And again, it will not impact any students that are currently attending. Those students have a right to the full services of Lowell High School up to the, up to the point that they receive their diplomas. But I think, again, the concern is that some of the guidance just put us in a situation where we questioned whether we were ready to continue taking on students and whether or not, before we do that, whether we needed to take a pause so that we can make sure the right supports are there, so that we could support all the students, the ones that we're bringing on school choice, the ones we plan on tuitioning in, as well as the students who are coming to Lowell because they, they're residents of Lowell and newcomers that we know that we need to address their needs as well.
And just one more thing, Mayor. I believe we haven't, we didn't participate in school choice for years because we didn't have room, correct?
Correct.
In the high school, I don't know when that started, but I think we're going to be needing numbers in the high school. That's why I think we do need more questions answered. But I think I'd be voting in favor of delaying it, no problem, because of the three, our three lawyers got together and they think it's the best thing for us. But maybe we can come back and open it up again someday, that's all.
Well, that's the purpose of the motion.
Yep, yep.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, my understanding is we review this every year. So, I would make a motion that we vote to not participate in inter-district school choice for the next, for the upcoming school year, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty.
Seconded by Mr. Dakota. Any further comment, Ms. Nutter? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Have a very nice.
Next, we have, the revision of the post, Human Relations position has been withdrawn at this time. Next, we have expenditure, yes, Madam Superintendent, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to... I just wanted to let the committee know that this was some conversation with the consultant that we had hired relative to the, the salary for the next HR director and the candidates that were coming forward. And we've, we've asked the consultant to continue to search for those candidates at this time. So, so we'll delay this going forward, and we're hoping that in the next week or so, we'll, we'll be getting some additional candidates to review.
Next, we have expenditure transfer. I need a motion to approve the expenditure transfer of $243,445.67. I need a motion to, Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Thank you. Next, we have, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Lay?
This is 8.3.
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we, I need a motion to take and approve all four convention and conference requests together, by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay. Next, we have communications, invitation to Playworks. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Earlier this year, the mayor, the mayor and I met with some of the board members from Playworks, and it was, it was offered to us to have a pilot in our schools. They afforded us two pilots that will be taking place prior to May 24th, and they'd like to showcase that work. So, you're invited on May 24th to the Maury School at 11:30 AM to learn about Playworks and, and see what the pilot does for our students in our schools. So, it'll be also piloted at the Pawtucket School.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we close up here, a couple of announcements, can I...
Oh, just, I just want to, all in favor of this, the communication?
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah. Are you good to get out of here? I need a motion to accept and place on file, actually, formal. Mr. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Martin. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware in the city and my colleagues, that the Lowell High School is performing Shrek the Musical this weekend, on the 17th, 18th, and 19th. And a very well-kept secret, the Robinson School is also doing a performance of The Lion King on May 31st and June 1st. This is their second musical, they're so excited, and it should be a really great time. So, if you've got those dates, and you want to fill that, and you've got some grandchildren or kids in the neighborhood, bring them over to the high school, or bring them over to the Robinson on that, the last week, last day of the, of May and the 1st of June. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other announcements? Motion to adjourn? By Ms. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Hoy. Thank you.
[inaudible].
Yeah, reminder to our audience, what, 6:30?
6:30.
6:30, public hearing on, our hearing on the budget.